Hey, everybody. We're live and I'm proud to introduce for the first time a man that I feel like I should have known a long, long time and have it, but you know, so it goes. The Honorable Reverend Kenneth Anderson, candidate for Oakland City Council Seat District Two. Reverend Anderson, welcome, and I'm honored to meet you.
I'm happy to be here. Thank you so much.
You take my pleasure. Hey, tell my viewers about your great church and um you run for Oakland City Council District Two.
Absolutely. Williams Chapel Baptist Church has celebrated eighty-five years of ministry. We were organized in nineteen thirty-nine and we have been in Little Saigon, which was considered to be the new Chinatown since nineteen seventy-eight. And we are glad to be still alive, to be still as as a black district as well as continuing to be advocating for our local community regardless of our home. Um, I'm the sixth pastor of Williams Chapel Baptist Church, which I'm in my fifth year. And under my leadership, we have had several partnerships with La Clinique, we're building affordable housing. Uh, those that are really in poverty. We also nurse with heart. Uh, we have a food bank. We have so many things going on with the cafe that is not yet to be established since twenty fifteen. I have been involved with food buyer. We're very supportive of the concerns of our community and District Two where we're located. And also thinking about the other concerns in complete District Two. So I'm just a pastor that has been working with four mayors under my leadership. And four city councilmen and district leaders under my leadership. So I've always been involved. I put myself in this place because I care and I'm concerned and recognize that a secure environment is essential for fostering community well-being and prosperity. And just want to put myself out there, not just preach it on Sunday and Wednesday, but make sure I'm putting my words to action.
What was the uh aha moment? Everybody has this this moment uh when they decided to run. What was the, what happened that made you say, you know what? I'm gonna run for council because I believe I can really make a difference in Oakland in that way, because you made a difference in and the ways associated with your church, of course. But what was the moment when you said, you know what? I'm gonna throw my hat in the rain and make it happen.
I would say Milwaukee. Honestly. Um, she said, you're already a part of the National Congressional, National Convention, uh, which was organized by Martin Luther King, Baptist Minister. I'm the president of our state. I'm already doing the work and seeing the prices that has been taken place. I said, I don't want to talk about this in the board wall. It's a special, let me put myself out there. Recognize a pastor, preacher is already a politician. Jesus was a politician. He was doing the work to the Jews, the Gentiles, et cetera. So I stepped out of my comfort zone. Letting the people know as well as the congregants know that I'm not just focused on our well-being. I'm concerned about this portion of Oakland, which is District Two, but entirely. As involved and raised and everything, it is just for us to, as clergy, as men of the cloth of respect, to just show, we can't just talk about this in our board walls with our beautiful thank you words, but get out into the street.
And you know, now that you're out there, what, what have you learned?
I've learned how to promote your church.
Yes, sir.
And how to continue to do what I've already been doing. Sharing truth, the gospel. And this candidacy, everybody's making promises. But one thing that is not a lie is that in my faith and my belief, Jesus says, God loves all people. God love. And it's a shame for a preacher pastor to talk about the troubles of their local community and not do anything about it in the community outside of the sanctuary. That's why I put my grace in the
Have you, in in going out, you've been on panels and everything else? Um, what? Um, this is kind of an easy question. I guess not that there's a hard one, but what's, what's the number one thing people are talking about with you?
With all of them. Public safety. Budget. Uh, housing and homeless. And then we also have some major concerns about transportation and climate. Everybody is singing the same song, just in a different tune. That's why I have been so spiritual with my counterpart in this, because whoever wins, they still have to work with Reverend Anderson. All mayors have had to work with me. All city council members of District Two have worked with me. So I have no enemy, but I don't choose sad false promises.
Now, when you're out there, you're talking with people. Uh, do you sense that they are really interested in wholesale change? Or do they just want the city to just do something? Or something in between? Some people just, you know, they they say, for example, they talk about illegal dumping. And I've heard people say, hey, you know, these mattresses are all over the place and not being taken care of. Other people just, they want wholesale change in government. But what are you hearing they want you to do in terms of public safety? For example, police. They say, hire more police, but then others say, we don't have enough money to do that. What's your take on that?
Um, my take is we have a community now, and I say, we are a city. That's a little bit more educated, more knowledgeable, more tense. So they have more of a vocal of voice of their major concerns. But still not knowing what to do, how to do. Uh, when it comes to District Two, which I'm running for, is the public safety. And I've voiced that if you're not concerned about Little Saigon District Two, which is uh sex trafficking that happens right in front of our church every day. It will rise up to Lake Merritt. And then to Lake Merritt, it goes to Lake Shore. And then from Lake Shore, it'll go up Rocker Island and it's right above. So we have a full concern about District Two. Not certain parts. Every part of District Two has its own issue. International prostitute Lake Shore, the uh traffic. People are not driving safely. It's more of a residential area. I was brought up in that area. Um, we're concerned about the lake, all of the innocent lives that have been taken. Even dead bodies have been found in Lake Merritt and of luggage. We're concerned about different things, but when we put ourselves together and say, it's not just a part of District Two that needs help, it's all of District Two. That's what makes me different, because I know both sides of District Two.
Do you have, uh, maybe I shouldn't ask this. I don't want to get you into too much, any trouble, but uh, do you have a favorite restaurant in Little Saigon that you like to frequent?
They're closed. But when it comes to the taco truck that's right behind a twelve hundred Lake Shore, um, I absolutely love.
Yeah. So you said that the place you were thinking of was actually closed now, permanently closed?
It is.
Yeah. Let's talk about that. What should we do to turn around that state of affairs? My background's in economic development, so I have you know, a range of ideas and all that sort of thing, but I want to hear from you. You know, can this, that be turned around or what do we do to get into that situation from your perspective?
Hmm. When it comes to Little Saigon, is that term for me to direct? Okay, those individuals, rather than Hispanic or of Asian descent, they live where they work.
Mm-hmm. Yes, yes.
And I believe that when all of this frustration took place before the special election, those that were able, they said, let's shut down. Because they saw what was taking place. And they said, we've worked too long and we've seen what's happening before. It's really gonna blow up. That's my opinion.
Yeah.
They're closed, but they still own property in my open.
Mm-hmm.
In my open.
Mm-hmm.
But they just didn't have the fine tell for them to give their best. I'm speaking of Little Saigon. I'm speaking of China, those communities where they live and work.
Yes, sir. Yeah, well, I would like to share this with you because I wrote, this was oh, March twentieth, twenty twenty, the pandemic. Uh, my longtime friend and god sister, Oakland Mayor Libby Schaaf, came up with an idea of a kind of a task force for the pandemic. But I thought that instead of having a task force, which she should have done, was had a, a business uh grant plan to help businesses stay open during the pandemic, rather than having them to close. And then buy them, you know, air fresheners so you can filter out the COVID-nineteen impurities and all that, right? Uh, and then work to keep them open so that they could have their businesses going. And yet, of course, she didn't listen to me, but what happened afterward was a number of people who sat on that board, they lost their businesses, like Lucas, uh, the folks at Lucas Wrong Board.
Oh, yeah. I love their burgers. And for
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, best fries in Oakland, man.
In the world.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Well, uh, Richard and his wife, they were involved in that, and yet here their business is crumbling while they're on this task force. So I'm saying, wait a minute, give Oaklanders money who have these businesses. We can do it through tax increment financing. What's wrong when we're not responding to our businesses like we should? I mean, you know what I'm talking about, because you're, you know, in right there, you're in like Flint with them, right? How can we do better as a city? Because to me, I mean, if I were running economic development, I was straight down a long time ago, but you know, they don't, they don't, they don't like me telling them. You know, what, how can we get this going? How can we revive? Because this is a big gap in disinvestment, right? And Pastor, we're not doing anything about it. That's what bothers me. I'm happy to be wrong. Tell me, what do you think?
Well, as I stated, people are more educated and more aware of what the frustrations that we're dealing with at the city. So I'm not a politician. I'm a pastor and I've been involved in all of it, but maybe I was unaware of all of the details
Hmm, mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
that I won't be aware of now. When you think about Lucas, when you think about Ozumo's.
Yes, yes.
When you think about the con.
Yes.
That same
Yes.
corner.
Mm-hmm.
It was not always live downtown. But something happened. It just became alive. However, those that were the owners of these buildings and those that have invested and who they wanted to be in their business gave these persons that built it up down to Oakland, saying, if you want chandeliers, I'll build you a chandelier. I'll give you couches and this, yours. I'll make it exactly where you want it. But after the ten years, it will be marketable. No one thought that it would go up forty percent.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
They didn't think that. They, they expected it to go up, but not that much. So I don't know if it's the city's fault or the landlord's fault. I think there should be some kind of um laws, making sure that as things are building, folk will be torn down, because that's what happened to Ozumo's. That's what happened to, that's what happened to Lucas. They just could not afford the rent.
Right, right.
That's all.
Laisse vaux too.
In my opinion.
Yes, sir.
I don't know, but I think a little bit, I know.
Yeah, no, you, and you can add also laissez-val to that mix and uh right?
Well, when his family started back, he was done.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Judges, pastors, doctors, we all hung up there.
Yep, yeah.
That was our go-to.
Yeah, yep, yep.
That was our go-to.
Mm-hmm.
If it was not uh, 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 that, we would go to Fat Lady.
Yep, foul, yeah, Fat Lady. Yep, still there, by the way, thankfully. Yep.
He's still there, but he's there because he still owns it.
Right.
Got.
Mm-hmm.
Still there because they got those grandfather's roots. I'm not saying they're not dealing with how to negotiate their leases, but however, they don't have the traffic.
Mm-hmm.
They still have the quality. But people are not going anywhere that they don't feel safe.
Right. Why, in your opinion, have we not made helping businesses a priority? We used to, way back in the day, but why? I mean, small business. I don't mean like big business. I mean, small business. Where are we going wrong?
Well, in all fairness, when you talk about business, small businesses, I can't help but go to black-owned businesses.
Yes, sir.
That were in West Oakland. That were fried slim pickings and one was going like deep fat. The black had success when it was considered urban renewal.
Yes.
They got some money.
Yes, yes.
They had to be pushed away.
Yes, sir.
And so the black business had fine tell, word of mouth. We go wherever it comes. Go where our money is appreciated. When it comes to Chinatown, Chinatown is owned, operated, trust me. They have they have coal. Listen. It's well organized. Fruitvale. You have those that are Hispanic. They support their people. Now, if you want to talk about downtown business, or if you completely talk about all businesses, people are not able to afford uh, a breakfast that should cost fifteen dollars, but now it's twenty-seven. They're learning how to make a dish they love at your restaurant at home, less to come.
Yes, sir. Shifting gears a little bit. If you're elected, what kind of people do you want working for you? How are you gonna staff your office?
If I'm elected, those that are in this campaign, we had some conversations and they should be honest as we made some comments. Because I believe every last one of them, regardless of who they're supported by, have a best interest. To be in a special election, two years, you can't fix everything in two years. You know that.
Yes, sir.
So those that were running for this position, I would consider them. However, I would also be wise to remember the current plan. Uh, Ms. Israel, uh, she's been in District Two for many years. She knows me very well. You can call her, and she's and knows Reverend Anderson. So we cannot just push out people that know the problem. Most of the issues is about communicating and responding to the issue and not ignoring them. And that takes some time. Uh, those that are in this candidacy has never been in local government, period.
Right, right.
So you gotta take some steps and learn the system. We don't open the system. We think we know.
Yeah.
But we don't.
It's well said.
And that's why I have been so spiritual, so prayerful for each of these candidates. Five and please myself make up six, because you cannot make promises you can't eat.
Extremely well said. Hey, also, um, what you're feeling about how to solve the budget deficit problem? And everybody has an answer. I know it's talked about. You've talked about it. But uh, for this audience, what's your, what's your take? What say you?
It has its perks and it has its oomph. I have three things. I'm married happily. There are responsibilities that I have to do as a husband and as their responsibilities I have to do as a pastor to my congregation. So if Regine is going up, you can't fuss at the congregation. It's what it is. If you're a part of the ministry, we need to support. I can't fuss that ads are expensive. We gotta eat. So when it comes to this, um, search to tap, uh, per se businesses, don't take it as if they're making a way to say, we gotta eat up the carbs for city councils negligence.
Mm-hmm.
If it's really gonna work, hopefully it won't have to be forever. But if we keep ignoring the fact that we don't want to go to bankruptcy, we're gonna put ourselves into that. And no candidate, and I mean this, in District Two, that has never been in that position can fully speak in a full negative tone about the status of our local government, Oakland, budget crisis. I tell you, that's my opinion.
Now, we've lost the A's, actually in order, really, uh, the Warriors, the Raiders, the A's. And if you want to tack on the Oakland Panthers, you can do that too. Why, in your opinion, did we lose three major sports teams in less than ten years?
Badly. No accountability. A hundred and forty million dollar deficit. We're in. And beyond that. Um, when it goes back to Libby, he actually went to school with my mother, Skyline.
Hmm.
Um, I've said
You said Skyline?
Yeah.
Skyline?
Skyline High School.
You?
My mother.
Your mother?
Yeah.
What was her, what was her graduating class?
Oh, I don't want to tell them the age. But with Libby.
Class of eighty.
My mother, listen, I'll tell you, my mother was the lead chair leader of Skyline High School.
I know who your mother is. Well, that's a small world.
Alyssa Anderson.
Class of eighty.
So you're saying you know my mother?
I'm acquainted with your mom. Yeah, because she was coming. I was going out and she was coming in. Libby's class of eighty-three.
There you go. I said she was with Libby.
Right, right. Small world, man.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, my mother, long hair all put together. Trust me. Still have it. But I'm saying brought some life. And I think she was really for Oakland being a resident of Oakland. And then she was tapping out the house of buildup downtown Oakland, you know? Um, you don't know the struggles that leaders go through at certain times. So for us to think things can be challenging, because I don't believe those in local government had any form of protocol, job description. It was just kind of like uh interpretation of the court. So anything can be done. But when it comes to this past mayor, there is absolutely no exception. None. And her testimony of being poor, sleeping in her car, all of those things. I mean, she of being poor, sleeping in her car, all of those things, I mean, she young.
Yeah.
All of this on her, I pray for her every night. Not a wicked prayer, but who was influencing her? And maybe she didn't fully know. That's why we need people in leadership that are not stupid. But can really be around the white kitchen table. Of people that can gravitate, all of my friends are old, older than me. Older than me. I can go down the list. There are still a lot, major people that have made a great impact in Oakland. But that was their day, right now. I mean, if it was a day that, uh, people could go down to the accessories office and find a beautiful house in Piedmont. Golf links roll, and because of relationship, they said just pay fifteen hundred dollars at your house. That day is not here anymore. People don't have love and care. Right now, budget crisis is major. And a lot of residents, uh, in District Two, City of Oakland are saying, now we're gonna go with this budget. We get the public safety, okay, what about the budget? Then the homeless, the housing, a two-bedroom in a high-rise that costs eight thousand dollars a month. That's just, right? Don't have automobile. Then the transportation, then the climate. Are we trying to San Francisco? Are we mimicking the San Francisco? Or do we really wanna help what is known as Oakland, California?
Thank you, thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's outrageous when, I think it was Derek Sue told me he went to Denny's once, uh, down there. Hold on a second, I'm gonna connect you. Hey Alan, Alan's the owner of the Grand Lake Theater. Alan, I want you to, uh, get behind my friend, I'm interviewing right now Reverend Kenneth Anderson. Alan Machado is the Grand Lake Theater. I'll call you back, Alan, alright? Alright, I can see ya. He's calling me off the, Alan's a good guy, so if you, you know, you're the Grand Lake.
Oh, of course.
Yeah, of course you know.
I wasn't, I wasn't born, but my uncle, the Reverend Harold Anderson rented us the entire theater. It was the Ten Commandments. That's back in seventy.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, no, like I said, I know Crocker Island. I, I know that shore, I know Long Beach, I know Manhattan, I know all. But I'm saying, what about District Two, where the prosecution is coming?
Right.
That's, it used to be in Pablo, in y'all day. Now it's international. But if we don't take a hold of it, it's gonna get around the lake, around it. Then it's gonna push up to Lake Shore.
Yeah. And I'm glad you brought that up about around the lake because one of my favorite areas to go historically has been, remember, remember when we had the Parkway Theater over there? Yeah. Oh, I love that place. I li- I literally lived at the Parkway. And now it's still dead. What do we do in your view to revitalize it, to really bring it back to when it was, you know, happening, right? We've got, we've got some great places, got Pappy's down there and everything else, but it's still, it's not quite popping. Yeah, grocery stores, yeah, but then, you know. Uh, I remember when I used to eat at, uh, Lake Mary Bakery all the time and.
Don't talk about that. And Charles, I love him to death.
Yeah.
And he tried, whatever plates. He tried to keep it with name, Lake Mary.
Yeah.
And he was on Lake Shore, but he's not there.
Right. Yeah.
I was going to Lake Mary for my life. I miss their food.
Yeah.
The early bird, you know, you get there for the early bird, it's not the full price. The donut, the chicken, they used to be open all night. But I will say this. When you start only focusing on one group of people and not think about all people, you will lose every time.
And Charles did start to do that. Yeah, yeah, you're absolutely right about that. Yep. And that was, that was sad. I remember.
Did never did it.
No. I, I remember it was twenty-four hour, you walk in at three in the morning, get a great breakfast. Oh, boy.
But he raised the price.
Yeah.
To keep out a certain group of people.
Yep, yep, that's right. Yep. And that's the thing, the funny thing about it is that the, the group of folks he tried to keep out, if you think about it. Had some of the Hells Angels as, as their friends, yet the Hells Angels used to eat there. Right?
You can't focus on just one group of people.
Right, right.
You know, and he was, um, major institute as a businessman, and we're not playing the race card, he had other businesses. But when he bought Lake Mary, that was Oakland.
Yep.
Everybody was.
One package. Boom, that's right.
He wasn't just black folk, Asian, white folk, it was everybody. That is different to me, a place where everybody feels welcome.
That's right, yep.
But when we start segregating.
Yeah, that's not Oakland.
You're, you're gonna get in trouble, especially in District Two, the most diverse district in all the districts of Oakland. You can't do it. And so that's what makes me very unique of all of my other, uh, good candidates that are running for this office, is that I'm Pastor Anderson, period. Born and raised, been involved, been wanting to make a change. I have nothing to complain to say from Harold, Lily, Kunita, Para, Charlene. And Pamela, Paula, sorry, Paula. Um, he went to Skyline too, from what she said.
Yeah, yeah.
But.
Don't forget Harold.
I said Harold first.
You said Harold, okay, I, I don't.
Harold Low.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
My ears.
No, I said him first.
Yeah.
He and I are two men in this particular, uh, race. Husband, uh, father figure, and he has a great, great wife, Kunita, I endorse her. I've supported Harold, I've worked with, uh, Nikki Bads for a year. I've worked with everybody. Do I have no enemies? I just want us to not make false promises.
Right, right.
Because that's gonna be so, I have a deep understanding and commitment to exploring various avenues to address these pressing issues. But I don't want to make false promises. I just wanna give them, as you said, I do to make the district better. Having people like you. You know, let's have a talk once a week, once a month. How is it going? Councilmember Anderson, what did you find out? Exposing. How can you talk about somebody in the position, never been in the position to even say you know? Can't even get a gift more than fifty dollars. Try having somebody door dad do some lunch. You might break the crown neck. Those kinda things, we have to be so careful.
It's a good idea though. It's a good idea.
It's a great idea.
It's, one thing, um, and we were talking about the Parkway and how much, how much we love what was going on down there. Um, and what's going on now and everything else. But if you had a magic wand and you could just wave it. What would be the first thing you'd do in terms of a wish regarding District Two? Cause see, my, my first wish, I would, if I were to have magic wand, my first thing would be like, bring back the Parkway, wing, wing, you know? Would enough money survive forever? And then I'd get down to the, then I'd get down to the nitty gritty stuff after that, that'll be the fun one, I get that out of the way. And then I'd get, then I'd do some other stuff. But what would you do? What would be your, 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 what would you do with your first wish?
My first wish would be to have Lake Shore prestigious community.
Yes, yes.
By me being brought up.
Right, right.
Because when you talk about Lake Shore, you're talking about a prestige community. I remember when it was Lucky's and Basket Robber, Quick World. All of those things that represent family and diversity.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be my.
Lake Shore, Lake Shores Cafe.
It's closed.
I know.
Daddy, I miss Daddy.
Oh, me too. And Hugo Pastor on Zenny sixty-two, I have video after video after video of people I've interviewed at Lake Shores Cafe. Uh, just, you know, that was, that was my go-to, I mean, I, I did.
The bacccha, uh, turkey sandwich.
Yeah. Oh, that was the best. Or they had the, uh.
Four dollar mimosas.
Yeah. Yes.
The waffle.
Yep, and they had the omelets, the omelets were terrific.
Oh, yeah. Uh. I mean, the only thing you still have in my old thinking, Philly cheese steak, uh, steak. I eat so to the present, but it's still amazing. Um, Gap has always been there, that's surprising. I remember when Gap first got there.
Yeah.
But they're still, they're still there.
I gotta, I gotta share this with you. Did you know Peggy Moore?
Listen to me, don't mention that. And I say that respectfully, because I always respected leadership. That's one thing it will be known for. If Nikki Bads won or the supervisor, I told her I was gonna run. I told her I was going to run for District Two. And then I told Peggy Moore, one of the greatest promoters for anybody trying to run for any civic government position.
Yes, sir.
I met her in her apartment, and she said, Pastor, who she was a part of my broadcast. She listened to my broadcast every Sunday night, Monday night, she heard my chaperone, my podcast. And she said, Pastor, I'm going to support you. Libby, she was a big support for Libby, so many other people.
Oh, yeah.
And then when I found out that she got into a car accident. Broke my heart.
Now, this is, uh, we're, we're talking about Lake Shores Cafe, what, what you see right here, that, this is actually interview, this is our interview at Lake Shores Cafe right here.
One of my favorite seats, in the back.
Mm-hmm, yes, that's that, this, the, the, this place, and, uh, I'm not gonna play too much out of respect for your time, but just sharing that, uh, because the interview is eighteen minutes long. But, uh, this is what I would do, we'd go to Lake Shores Cafe and interview folks like Peggy, and I miss her a ton, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I miss her a ton. And, uh, our mutual pastor Robinson says, Dr. Anderson is my friend. He comes from a legendary family out of Oakland, and he's a great man who loves Oakland. There you go. Yeah.
And he's a great man.
And a great friend to me, too.
Oh, yeah. He's a brilliant mind, and has been in this for many, many years. And I'm happy for his commitment and still involvement in, in Oakland. Religiously and politically.
Yes, sir. We have, uh, talked for almost fifty minutes, so give us, out of respect for your time, give us a wrap-up of, uh, how you're gonna be, why, why people should vote for you for Oakland City Council District Two.
I'm not a politician. I'm a pastor, which means as a pastor you have to love all people. As a pastor, people don't come to your church these weeks if you're not giving them something that they're benefiting from. A church cannot survive off of free will given if there was not a leader that was sustaining the annual budget of the ministry, as well as recognizing, he can't do this as much, we gotta do this following lead. And then going over the four walls of the church. Partnership with Safe Parking, we were the first church to do in Oakland. With Ken Chambers Digital. Portable Housing, partnership with a clinic, feeding over five hundred people every specific Tuesday of the month. I mean, we can go all one in a month. Cafe, a partnership head start, all of these things under my leadership, I've been doing. I got into the place, it's because I care, because I'm passionate. And because we cannot just talk about this in the pulpit and not go out into the street. So I'm not reinventing the wheel. I'm not reinventing the wheel. The Black Baptist preacher was always advocating for all people, we just want to be heard. And it took the Jews, some, some, to get the message across. And now we're in a position right now, all this sweat, blood and tears have almost been put in the gutter. So I wanted to be on record that Reverend Anderson was not just talking about what needs to be done in Oakland, but took an opportunity for a special election to give it a try. If I don't win, I'm still with Reverend Anderson. When I do win, I need all of the help. People like telling me what they want to happen within these two years. Technically, whoever wins, they gotta start campaigning. So do they really have time for you? If they wanna stay, they gotta start making promises.
Yep, yep, yep.
I, I know mayors that desire to be mayors are already making promises. It's just tricky. So I'm a man of faith, I'm passionate, and I recognize that uh, secure environment, uh, essential for fostering community well-being and prosperity. Proud to be a part of it.
Pastor, you gotta come back so we can talk some more, man.
Oh, absolutely. You're a good man.
Oh, hey, you're a good man.
And I apologize for the delay.
No, 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 no.
I do. But I want you to know and then about. And then about that.
Yeah.
I'm simply willing to do what I said I was gonna do on these forums. And then once I'm in the position. Get feedback.
Right, right.
I'm not a novice. I know leadership. I know government. But do we really know as candidates, do we really know the blueprint of the entire level? Of Oakland?
Right.
As a candidate, I'll leave this with you.
Yes, sir.
For District Two. It takes other council members. To support. What has been. I was encouraged and taught. A police officer doesn't down talk the police officer. A doctor doesn't down talk the doctor. A preacher shouldn't down talk a preacher. Meaning whatever your occupation is, you should not little. You should up it. But try to find how you can fix a public knowledgeable issue. That's important. We cannot do that as candidates in a special election. We can't do it. Two years is not enough.
There it is, folks. Check out his great, beautiful website, uh. A lot of people in there that I know, people that you know. And I wanna. First of all, thank Reverend for the work he's done in District Two and in Oakland and his family as well, uh, including his wonderful mom. So. And check out his website. That's the website, folks, right there. You can see right there, electAndersonOaklandD2.com. Oi. Hey, Pastor, you don't have to move a muscle. I got this. Subscribe to the Vlog Report with Zenny sixty-two, folks, and bookmark OaklandNewsOnline.com. That ends the stream. Hey, how was that?